So much for coming and attending our meeting this evening. I do know that most of you know that our meeting can be seen and heard on YouTube. So we want to make sure that our audience and our board members are communicating so it can be heard. We don't want to feel like we're screaming, of course, but we want to make sure that you're hearing us. We hope that each of you have had an opportunity to pick up an agenda and we will follow it to the T. Our first item, we will call this meeting to order. We will ask you to stand with us as we lead in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I will announce that Mr. Dino will not be attending our meeting this evening. He has conflict. But we have a quorum, so we will continue. I will ask the board members, Dr. Ryan, do we have any changes in our agenda? Okay, I need to hear motion to approve the agenda as printed.
The chair, I move that the agenda is approved as printed.
Second.
Has been moved and properly second that we approve our agenda. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Item number three, Ms. Hope.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Ryan. I'm excited to announce our April Employee of the Month. Frieda Ruffin is the Curriculum and Instruction Administrative Assistant. She provides unwavering support to three academic directors, demonstrating integrity, enthusiasm, and a genuine passion for her role. She consistently goes above and beyond, tackling challenges with a solution-oriented mindset to ensure the smooth functioning of academic programs. Her positive attitude is a daily inspiration and she proactively participates, I'm sorry, correctly anticipates the needs of the academic directors, planning ahead to optimize their workload. She is always ready with a listening ear and kind words, providing encouragement throughout the day. Her effective communication ensures that her team is well taken care of, fostering a collaborative and supportive work environment. According to the directives she supports, she has been a blessing and her contributions have significantly enhanced the team's efficiency and positive atmosphere. Congratulations to Frieda Ruffin, the April ECPS Employee of the Month.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good car for you, Frieda, Ms. Ruffin, from Greg's Sessions, who's a state Farm agent here in town. That's for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are sitting high. That's the best part of the meeting. Continue. Public comments, I have a sheet. And we do not have anyone signed to do public comments, so we will continue our meeting. Item number five, item. We need approval for two sets of minutes, one at a time. The first set is our March 11 regular business meeting, open session. Do we have any discussion, comments, corrections for our March 11 meeting?
Just typo on the second page, right up the chair. Same line, recognize community, and then recognize Susan Hope, who missed it twice, I didn't say it.
Okay, I see that.
Just typo.
Any other thing? Anyone have seen? If not, we will need to hear motion for approval as amended, as corrected.
I make a motion to approve our March 11 regular business board meeting, open session minutes as corrected.
Second. Has been moved and properly second that we will approve our March 11, 2024, regular, open session, business meeting as corrected. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. We will go to the next set of minutes. March 26. And there is a special call meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to that set of minutes? Hearing none, I need to hear motion for approval.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the special call meeting of March 26, 2024, as printed.
Second. Has been moved and properly second that we will approve our special call business meeting, March 26, 2024. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, well, now at item six, items for information. Item one.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, hello. My name is Turquoise Almanick. I am COO of Freedom Org and also head of the Historical Cultural Preservation Department. Typically, I will be presenting on this section for our organization, but since Marqueta has such a passion and is from Princeville, she's going to present on this for us. I just wanted to put a face to the name because my name is on this sheet here and I didn't want you to wonder who I was. Thank you.
All right, hello, everybody. For those who don't know me, my name is Marqueta Dickens and I was eager to present, one, because I know we have some new faces and I wanted to come back and to represent and let you know who I am. And for those board members who have previously given us permission in the past to utilize Princeville Elementary, thank you and just here to give a testament to what we've been able to do in the past two years. So my name is, again, my name is Marqueta Dickens. A lot of people call me Q. Most people here know me for basketball. I started out at Princeville Elementary. Shout out to Ms. Mercer back there. She's been amazing through the last couple of years with supporting us and the mission that we have. But K through 12, I was a Edchcombe County Public School student. I am thrilled to say that I am a success story coming from rural eastern North Carolina. One of the first things we want to do is get up out of here. We want to leave, we want to take our talents elsewhere. But as you get older and you grow and you understand things and you understand the lack and the need and your responsibilities, things change. And I like to say that my life is divided in order and it has placed me back here for a reason. I am here by choice, not by force. And that was to really create and be a part of the solutions that I know are needed here in Edchcombe County. And so with that being said, we created Freedom Org, which is a 501(c)(3). It is a community development corporation and our mission is to invest in historically disinvested communities. And our vision is to create self-sustaining communities. So it's like, what is that and what does that have to do with education? So everything, it has to do everything with education because that's where it starts, that's the base. But education is also a connecting of the dots for a lot of the other careers and things that people like myself went out and did. I know you all will be proud to say, especially Mr. Privet, I got to give a shout out, Mr. Privet, because being where we're from, Edchcombe County, you come from humble beginnings and you have to remember that. You have to work for everything that you have. And I don't know if I ever told you this before, but it was seventh grade and I am a Hall of Famer at the high school and all of this, you know, all these accolades and sports. But in seventh grade, you did not allow me to be on that team, even though I was injured without a tryout. And from that day forward, I was mad at you, by the way. I was really upset. Ms. Jones was upset. We was like, I'm on crutches. How am I supposed to try out? But you made us figure out a way and to make it happen so that I didn't have any special privileges, no matter how talented I was, and I thank you for that. And it's the basis of what we're trying to re-instill in our students today and in the variety of things that we do. And I'm so proud to get out of your way so Resita can talk about the things that she's bringing here to Edchcombe County. But the first thing I wanted to talk about was Princeville Homecoming. And so the reason for Princeville Homecoming is really, is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life, preserving historical and cultural heritage, and creating economic opportunities for merchants across Edchcombe County. So the three departments that we work in are Community Economic Development, Historic Cultural Preservation, and Agriculture. Education falls into all three of those departments for us. We have programming for educational purposes in all three of those departments. This one happens to fall again in all three when it comes to Princeville Homecoming and the things that we're doing there. We have a ton of opportunities to enrich students, to involve our students. I know the last two years we've been talking to Ms. Mercer about how can we get younger students involved? Because right now we have already involved our high school students. But we're trying to figure out how do we do that with Princeville Homecoming for our younger students. But so you'll always be able to know that we're going to be collaborative in our efforts. And I think it's a great opportunity for you all to continue to partner with us so that we can continue to bring these activities and events that bring in pride and just remind us who we are. And we love that we have the opportunity to do that at our school. Last year, we had several students who participated in our festivals during Princeville Homecoming and we look forward to having more. And so I'm going to get out of the way so Resita can talk a little bit more about what she does involving Princeville Homecoming and how it's an extension of that. I'm super, super excited about that and I will just say this, just like when I played, what you see is just my first move. You don't know the county move, so what you see right now in front of you and what we're presenting is something very, very small compared to the vision that we have in store for it. We do have several other partners like North Carolina State, of course, UNC Chapel Hill. I'm partnering with the U.S. Conservation, I'm sorry, North Carolina Conservation Fund, KB Reynolds, Do Energy, and so these are some of the folks who are supporting us, just to name a few, in the efforts that we are making here and the strides that we're making here in Edchcombe County. So thank you all for your time and your attention and I'm going to pass the mic over to Resita.
I shared a video earlier. I'm not sure if it was, I wanted to pull up a recap video. Yes, okay, awesome.
So this is just a quick video of our youth media camp while we're getting that pulled up. I'll just introduce myself. Hello, I'm Resita. I am the Narrative Director at, it's that one, I can hit play. Yeah, thank you so much. I'm the Narrative Director at Freedom Org. I'm also an independent filmmaker. Born and raised in Kentstown, North Carolina, so not a product of Edchcombe County, but Lenora County Public School system and Marqueta and I, let's talk about, you know, the similarities in our upbringings. I came back home from Chicago. I was in Chicago for a number of years. As Q said, a lot of us graduated, moved away from 2005 too. I became a TV news reporter with News Channel 12, so I did a year here and covered Hurricane Matthew. Moved to Chicago, started working on this film called Freedom Hill. And Freedom Hill is important to this story because I did a film about the environmental racism we experienced in eastern North Carolina. And instead of just coming home and just doing the film and then going back to Chicago, I did something called an impact campaign, which is a community engagement campaign that kind of gets you out of the theater, is the step after doing the story. And so I was thinking, what did little Resita need in Lenora County Public Schools growing up? I needed someone to pay me to play with a camera and teach me how to tell a story because I've always been a creative. And so that's what we did and we did our first year of the Freedom Hill Youth Media Camp in 2022 and we are heading into our third summer and so here's a quick video. My role in getting to the individual camp ended going the way that it went. Didn't give exactly what I meant.
All right, I'm recording.
Y'all share one thing you learned in these four weeks?
I learned a lot of things. The one thing that really stuck with me was different type of shots, like wide shots, close ups, older shoulders, stuff like that. So you need to watch out for it, kind of see that.
The best part of it was making a bomb, it was crazy.
All right, about the camera, even though I was behind the camera, I still learned a lot about it.
After a long time coming, like we're fine, we're like, the idea, like, the movie is here.
I would definitely want to be able to do something with film again.
One thing I learned from this camp was having to talk to people because I don't like people. I was not planning on making friends, so yeah.
And looking at you, nothing, you don't want to leave.
I learned about like being together as a crew and really like understanding each other and working together.
When I assigned y'all y'all's crew roles, like maybe you weren't, you know, super interested in that role, but everyone, whether you were interested or not, y'all all played y'all's part and I really appreciate that.
I learned how to network with people.
Trey got a little job on one of our sets.
I want to look at other roles too, but producing seems to be the one that I like the most.
Favorite part is Eric.
Ah, Eric did have a good masterclass.
Yeah, he really snapped with that one. I got the most information out of that one.
Well, Masterclass has really helped me because I didn't know a lot about each role and like I have an interest in all the other roles now.
I was saying that we also, we have our interview questions prepared.
We should let them do some interviews and we can spend like 15 more minutes out here. They can get some stuff.
I'd stop recording. Is it back off?
Yeah.
Your sound's on point. You know, you always have someone mic. Y'all were using the tripod so the shots are not looking crazy. We had a shot list, we had a game plan. I'm so proud of y'all.
This is Angel Zai. Is this one of yours?
This is Trinity, this is our director.
She looked like she ran it. She's one of yours, I can tell.
This is Viv, this is our DP.
When I see Resita, I see somebody who's easy to approach. You know what I'm saying? She teaches us more than just filming.
I see a teacher. She's somebody who could take charge. She's somebody who can lead a group into success and definitely can give just young filmmakers like myself just the opportunity.
All of you were selected because there's so much potential I see in y'all. Like y'all be joking and saying, Resita didn't believe in us about three weeks ago. I've always believed in y'all. When I did this film and I'm on this journey to come back home, I wanted to come back and I wanted to pour into the young people who remind me of myself and I wanted to be the adult that I needed. And I want you to know that any future you want for yourself, you can build. And if you don't know how to build it, call me and we gonna figure it out.
So the Freedom Hill Youth Media Camp is a four-week documentary production camp. We teach our students about eastern North Carolina's black history, Princeville's black history through the lens of documentary filmmaking. And so in just four weeks, we have a group of 13 students. Half of them are first-year campers. They make a group film about Princeville Homecoming. And then we have second years come back as fellows and they work on an individual film. Our dates for this year are July 23 through August 15. And all of our students get paid sizable stipends for their work. I believe in artists who pay for their work and so our students walk away with at least $1,000. And being able to pay them and being able to run this camp is really our partnership with Edchcombe Public Schools and being able to host this at Princeville Homecoming is foundational to that. I love my students. I invited one of them here from high tops to just share a little bit, a quick learn. Kaia, if you want to come up and talk about your experience last summer and then we'll wrap up. I'll pass back to you.
Hi, I'm Kaia Knight. I'm currently 18 and I'm a member of the Freedom Hill organization. I joined last year and it has been one of my favorite experiences. Learning about the culture, history, and the film of African-Americans. History as well, but locally, on a local level. Learning about the places we lived. Not only that, but the camp brought back a love for film and creating, and creating it. Hearing people's stories and their lives and learning from them. Being able to show that others, show that to others. And the connections I got from the camp brought mentors and friends. Share with similar passions as me, who want to see me and people who look like me past the standard that set, that was set for us.
So our applications are about to open next week. And yeah, we're committed to this work because we've been able to see the impact. A lot of our students didn't even know that filmmaking was a career option and it's opened up, you know, a myriad of options because there are so many roles, so many crew roles that go into film. And it also has reconnected our young people to their history, which I think is truly how we call them back home and keep them in our community. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to answer anybody? I would like to make a statement. When I hear that someone was born and raised in Lenora County. When I hear that someone was born and read in Lenore County, I'll admit. I was born and read in Lenore County. I don't need to ask any other question about just seeing. I don't know how we all landed here in Edgecombe County. Edgecombe County is a beautiful county. And we appreciate all the work that you are doing.
Thank you so much.
And we will be in support of it.
Thank you so much.
And thank y'all for coming back.
Yes, yes, I want to make sure that, you know, new faces get an opportunity to meet us as well and to be able to ask us face to face. And we believe in transparency. So looking forward to filling this, this art gap. We do have a tremendous detriment in terms of arts in our schools and our local schools. And so we look forward, again, this is just one program that we're presenting to you all today. But we have several more that we plan on implementing in the near future to benefit our students in the gaps and the voids that we have here. So thank you for your time so much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to give a few updates. We've seen here at the beginning of April, it's that time of year again for Special Olympics. Special, Special Insurance Department has been working with the town, Tarboro Parks and Recreation Department. Reverend Privet and Ms. Privet and the city council that hosts Special Olympics in Edgecombe County. We decided to host our third annual Special Olympics Spring Games at Tarboro High this Friday, April 12th, with a rain date of April 19th. This year will be the first year of young athletes ages two to seven years old will be participating. Athletes will get to participate in a number of areas such as long jump, tennis ball throw, as well as various running and wheelchair events. Lunches for participants and volunteers have been generously donated by Jersey Mike Subs up Tarboro. Great, great day, great opportunity to showcase talents of our students. STEM Design Challenge and Invention Convention. Twin Counties STEM Design Challenge will be held this Friday at the Waikiki Mountain Event Center from 9:30 a.m. until 12:00 noon. The Twin Counties Invention Convention will be held next Friday, April 19th and 9th at Edgecombe County, Edgecombe Community College at Tarboro. These events are for teams of middle school students and are sponsored by STEM. So very excited to host that and to have our votes participating in that. Also a great announcement about Thrive Scholars within Edgecombe County Public Schools. Congratulations to Harmony Big Ten of Tarboro High School and Jocelyn Hernandez Jimenez of North Edgecombe High School for being accepted to Thrive Scholars Program. They were chosen from a group, a pool of national applicants. And it's a six-year program that supports mentor and mentor students to be successful at top colleges. And we're very excited to have some of our students participating in that. I think speaks to that aspirational theme that we've been talking about already in the meeting today. And I'm very proud of our students for doing that. Just passed Friday, at the Burroughs Welcome Fund, North Carolina Teacher of the Year Ceremony for 2024. Just like to congratulate Rachel Brackney again, mad teacher at Southwest Edgecombe High School. She was one of nine finalists for Burroughs Welcome Fund, North Carolina Teacher of the Year. And even though she did not win, she represented Edgecombe County very well and very proud of her. And also congratulations to Mrs. Heather Smith from Haywood County Schools, who was awarded North Carolina Teacher of the Year. Sticking with our STEM theme, our Brick City Engineers Robotics Challenge. All of our students who competed in the Brick City Engineers Robotics Challenge, again sponsored by STEM. Just recently, it's a great opportunity for our students to learn and apply their knowledge about STEM education. And I know that's something very important. Our school district and our students at STEM work very hard to promote that habit of mine for STEM education. Also was very fortunate to attend our Variety Fest, Fan Fest, Arts Explosion event a couple of weeks ago. Our students, our students performed on two different nights and also got to show off lots of different artwork for our students and their musical skills. It was a great couple of nights and just a big thank you to our fine arts teachers, staff, and, and parents and students who put that show on. It was at the, very appreciative to Edgecombe Community College for sponsoring the event at their auditorium there. It was a great couple of nights. Also just to remind you, our superintendent student advisory groups are meeting again at the high school level. We've had four meetings in the last couple of weeks. At Edgecombe Early College High School, North Edgecombe, Southwest Edgecombe High School, and Tarboro High School. And again, those are groups of high school students, about 20 to 25 per school that advise me on different issues, are a part of them. And we talk a lot about things about how to make our school district better and what they see as important in their lives and what will help them become successful beyond, beyond high school. Finally, our Robotics STEM Day. Edgecombe Early College High School, high school robotics team will host full steam ahead STEM Day on Saturday, April 29th at Edgecombe Community College. And that's for all of our ECPS families who want to attend that. So we have, we have a lot of things going on. It's that time of the year with spring that a lot of, a lot of great events, both indoor and outdoor, and celebrating our students' achievements. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Could you, may I ask you one question on your advisory meetings with the students? Do you have a special schedule for those already in place? Some of us may like to attend sometimes.
I will be more than happy to share the dates with you. We, we tried to coordinate with the high schools. It's difficult to get on a specific calendar date. But when I have those dates, I'll be more than happy to share it with you.
Please do.
And give you the opportunity to, to attend and ask questions and listen.
All right, thank you much. Any other board members have any questions? All right. Now I'll report.
Chair, I'd like to appreciate Shannon Dennison being here today to provide your information.
Good evening. Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Bryan, I'm pleased to present to you the June 30th, 2023 financial audit. This, the period that's going to cover this audit is going to be specifically July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. So we're looking back to last school year as we, as we are looking, looking to close out this school year. We're looking a little ways back, but we hope to be presenting next year's audit much earlier in this school year. I'm pleased to report, I'm going to go through kind of high level 85 pages. I'm going to hit the topics that I think are most important. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me and I'm happy to answer any questions. I am pleased to report that you guys have an unmodified opinion on your 2023 financial audit. A clean opinion, the best opinion that you can receive on a financial statement audit. So congratulations on the hard work that went into it. Both within the finance department as well as throughout the district. We look at things that are not necessarily just financial. We, we get information from several different departments each year and kind of compile it as far as processes, procedures, documents filed and whatnot in addition to financial information. If you're wanting to follow along, you're welcome to or not either way. I'm on page 15. And I'm going to, talking about your fund balance. This is going to be kind of like your savings account that you would look at personally as the money that you have in store that you're able to use for future years. In your general fund, you started the year with about $3.2 million. You ended the year between $2.2 and $2.3 million. So you spent about $930,000 out of your, your fund balance in the general fund. On a similar fund, due to the indirect cost that's been charged, that's gone into the other special revenue fund. And that indirect cost is going to be charges that you're able to charge federal grants for the operation that costs the district to operate those federal grants. That money went into your other special revenue fund for the general use to the district. With that fund, you started the year with about $300,000. You ended the year with about $2.6 million. You saved about $2.3 million in your other special revenue fund. So when you take your general fund and your other special revenue fund, the district as a whole saved about $1.3 million for the 2023 year, which is excellent news for, as you know, the ESR money that the district received, which I see you guys have an update later on the agenda. The ESR money that you all received over the last several years is expiring. The final round of it expires in September of 2024. So as you come off of that, being able to have that little bit of extra in your fund balance to be able to still drastically ease off of it, but have a little bit extra in there to ease that. Your capital outlay fund, you've saved $200,000. You ended the year with a $2.4 million fund balance. Your state public school fund and federal grants fund, you don't carry any balances in. You lose it or you lose it, you use it or you lose it in those funds. Please to announce that there were no significant funds sent back on either of those, either of those areas. Jumping ahead to your budget versus actual, that starts on page 17. This is going to be page 17, we're at 20. This is going to be the original budget that the board passed, the final budget after all amendments compared to actual expenditures for these funds. As you may, you'll, as you notice, there are some overages. We'll talk a little bit about that in a minute as I get through some of the findings that we had for the audit. But just looking at this, you know, just kind of reiterating, you guys should be expecting to have budget amendments. And it is very normal for budgets to amend and change throughout the year. There's, you know, the Department of Public Instruction amends the budgets that go down to the district somewhere between 40 and 60 times or so a year. So it is common to have to, it is kind of a moving target for the finance officers throughout the year. So budget amendments are a good thing to, to see. Looking ahead to the child nutrition program on page 23. The child nutrition fund is handled a little bit differently than the other funds for the operation of the district. This fund, we recommend looking at your fund balance really on a cash basis. So comparing your cash balances from the prior year to the current year, you saved $511,000, ending with about $4.9 million in cash for your child nutrition program. Now going to jump ahead through many of the notes to page 53. On page 56, this details out the largest portion of the retirement expense that is a requirement to be paid as being part of the futures and state employees retirement system. The bottom number, the bottom percentage on this page, you'll see in 2014 was 8.69% and 2023 is 17.8%. So for every dollar payroll paid, that retirement expense has exponentially gone up over the last 10 years, even more so between 2019 and 2023. So as you guys are looking at ESR and the ending of ESR and, you know, what cuts are going to have to be made, you know, across the state, really the whole country, are looking at those cuts, what one, what, what you were able to afford in 2019, 2020, kind of before COVID hit. We all know how inflation's hit us personally. It's hit the district at the same, potentially more magnitude just because of the dollars that the district does spend and so much of it is payroll. So for every increase in retirement expense, it is a large increase to the district. Jump ahead to page 65. We issued three separate letters at the end of the audit based upon our review of the things that we were able to review. We looked at internal control. And that's going to be, does the district have checks and balances, segregation of duties? Are things in place to ensure everything is properly recorded within the district? We identified a few areas that I'm going to discuss in a minute that are opportunities for improvement within, within the district's internal controls. The next letter goes through compliance with federal programs. This is going to be all the federal funds that you received. We specifically dove into the ESR funds as for, for federal. We looked specifically at ESR fund, Title I, and another piece of the ESR is going to be emergency connectivity. Those were the federal programs we specifically looked at. We found no issues with how the funds were, were sent within those grants. The last letter that we issue is the same for state. We have one finding of non-compliance within state that I'll talk about in just a second. Now going to go through the findings starting on page 75. But before I do that, I wanted to make note of a couple of positive things that we found as we reviewed the, the district, our firm audits, about 85 of the North Carolina municipal districts. And there were a couple of things that really stood out specifically for Edgecombe County Schools as doing an exceptional job. And that was your individual schools kind of maintaining the records and getting all the information and having the checks and balances, the teachers' fund, all the funds turned in, the tickets turned in properly and deposited in the bank. They didn't, you guys did an exceptional job of that as well as grants. You guys have done an exceptional job at applying for and receiving additional grants above and beyond to be able to support and supplement the programs that are able to be for students. So I wanted to commend you on those things that are not necessarily part of the audit, but I think were something that really stood out to us. So the first finding relates to timeliness of audit and federal data collection form. As you know, the June 30th, 2022 audit was not issued until June of 2023. With the timing of that, the federal government requires audits to be submitted by March 31st, following the fiscal year. So we just passed this last March 31st. So the 2022 audit was, since it was not completed until June, was not able to be submitted and was not submitted by March of 2023. The timeline of that audit being so delayed, also pushed into the 2023 audit being delayed, past the state deadline, the state requires the audit to be submitted by the end of November. And so we, it missed the state deadline for 2023, but did meet the federal deadline. So your audit was completed in February and was submitted to the federal government prior to the March 31st deadline. As I note that one, we have, there's different levels of findings. There's material weakness, which is the most significant finding. And then there's significant deficiency, which is the next level that we feel is warranted to notify you, but not quite as severe as material weakness, that one. That one was a material weakness. The next one is a material weakness and its reconciliation of the bank accounts. We recommend that banking accounts get reconciled on a monthly basis to be able to keep up with and ensure that all of the reporting that everybody is looking at is accurate and timely. The next finding, the third finding, is a material weakness. It is budget violations, as I mentioned earlier, as we looked at the prior pages. There are several areas of expenditures that are over budget. There's two different ways funding comes in. You all approve a budget and the Department of Public Instruction allot funding in a way, a different way. So you're kind of juggling two different budgets, but in the budget that the board passed, the district has had several overages. So again, kind of keeping an eye out for budget amendments and making sure that funds don't exceed, the funds expected to exceed the budgets. The next one is a material weakness. We looked at transactions on credit cards and identified about between $15,000 and $16,000 of transactions on an administrator credit card that did not have receipts to be able to substantiate the expenditures. We recommend ensuring that all receipts are present and approved and reviewed, including credit cards, even if the funds have already been spent. The next one is a significant deficiency. This is for prior period adjustments. The majority of these prior period adjustments relate to expenditures that are on your government wide statements that do not impact your specific fund balance, but do have to be reported on your financial statements and primarily relate to long-term liabilities and fixed assets that were, that needed to be adjusted as of the beginning of the year. The final finding relates, as I mentioned, we identified one item within the state grants. There is, the Department of Public Instruction allot funds for specific purposes, and there was oversight on one teacher that wasn't a classroom teacher, paid out of a classroom teacher code. It was more of a facilitator performing administrative duties. On that, we did have a question cost of about $78,000, and there is potential that the district has to, will have to pay back to DPI that is kind of between DPI and the district. One thing to note on this one, as we kind of get on a normal audit schedule, these type of things, we will, we make sure we look at prior to June 30th. If it's identified prior to June 30th, you all are able to make those corrections. And while we still report it as a finding, it wouldn't have a question cost because it's able to be fixed before June 30th. Once June 30th passes, the department, DPI does not allow any additional changes July 1st. You know, it's hard cutoff. There can be no changes between different codes. So we hope that that assists you guys in trying to adjust anything before the end of the year, should there be any issues going forward. And those are the highlights from the 2023 audit nutshell. Do you all have any questions?
I have a question. Out of the six findings, and I'm particularly looking at 2304. I just wanted you to be there.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Do you feel that you and the current staff that we have now has a plan in place to correct these findings or to prevent them from being, how are we going to make sure this is not recurrence?
Absolutely. So I can't say that the findings are, you know, necessarily corrected because we'll report back on that next year as we go through and do our audit. However, based upon conversations that I have had with staff and what they've talked about that they're doing and putting in place, it does appear this finding, which relates to the credit card transactions not having receipts, as well as, you know, the other findings, that progress is being made and towards, the right conversations are happening.
I know the 06, we had a conversation, Dr. Brennan and I had a conversation about that, actually when we met with you. And I think that's, we've got a plan in place for that. So I was just checking on the other one, but thank you.
Yes.
Well, I am concerned about each finding. To me, that's the weakest part of this audit, that we need to make sure does not happen Thank you so much for your hard work. I know what you have to do to get this report.
And I appreciate it being thorough.
Yes. Anybody else?
Other than 70, close to $78,000, are there other paybacks that we're concerned?
That's a great question. No. So what happens kind of from here is the local government commission, as well as, like I mentioned, the federal government and Department of Public Instruction get copies of your audit. DPI will go through the audit in detail. They'll send a letter to the board, typically superintendent finance officer, board chair, get copies of the letter, I believe. And you'll have to go through and basically put together a plan of action, what's being done, what has been done, what procedures, what is in place to be able to ensure that it doesn't happen next year. And that will need to kind of be signed by all staff. Then as we come in next year, and when I say next year, we're starting a process, we're actually coming on site next month to start the 2024 audit. We've already started some of it. Dina's already sent us several, several different things that we've been able to start on. But we will review in depth specifically. You know, we'll do the regular review of everything, but anytime that we find something, we have to look a little bit closer the following year, just to make 100% sure that that has been corrected, or if it hasn't been corrected, then it gets reported again. You know, I will say it is very easy, since several, a few of these items were reported the previous year as well. And, you know, it's easy to get the train off the tracks. It's a lot harder to get it back on the tracks. It's a lot of work that goes into it. And so with having the late audit and not knowing about some of these things until really year end and last year, you know, you didn't get the audit issued until June. It's June, you're trying to close out the year. It's hard to make the corrections that quick. So that's why I think, you know, it'll be important as we get on kind of this normal schedule to be able to have it more timely for you all, for finance, for the staff of the district.
Any other questions?
Are there any possible, at what point there was a threat sometime back with holding some funds? Are there any threats now withholding federal dollars or anything?
No, that comes into play if the audits aren't completed by March 31st. So you were good this year, you shouldn't have, you may have gotten some warnings.
Yeah, we did.
But no, nothing will do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I just have a statement. I think my statement, and I'm saying this for Dina's benefit, the budget is all of our responsibilities, from the classroom teacher all the way up to the board. And we all play a part of it, and to make our audit better, we all have to follow the rules, including the board. So I want to say that for your benefit because it always sounds like it's sitting on your shoulders. But I think as a board, we all understand that the budget, the budget problems or issues, or even when we do the right thing, it's all of our responsibility. I just want you to know, we know that.
Thank you.
And part of that, and then we signed off on it.
That's right, we did.
We have to be careful about signing off on it.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm going to step in for this fierce tonight for ESR projects we have going on. And I want to give you an update on, I think this is the final phase of projects that we have coming out of ESR fund. And we have three pages in front of you, I believe, that talks about a lot of good work that's been done with HPA C units. Now I'm just going to, I'm just going to go down the list and talk to you a little bit about the contractor who's involved, the amount of the contract, and some of the changes that were made along the way, how much those cost, and the status of the project. So and then off to the far right, you have some notes for that, just in case of anything. So HPA C units at West Edward Middle School, chiller at Southwest Edward High School, rooftop units at Harborough High School, the rooftop unit at South Edward Middle School, the chiller, chillers at Carver and North Edward High School. Turn on page two, air handling units at Southwest Edward High School, electrical switches at Tarboro High School, a new chiller at Stock's, rooftop units, rooftop unit at MMA, some older upgrades as well across the district. We've changed out, put some new equipment in and changed up some insulation and different things that have the Tarboro High School stocks in both, chiller at South Edward Middle School, chiller pumps at Tarboro High School, as I think we said before, chiller pumps at Stock's, and chiller Phillips, and both chiller pumps. And I know you will be glad to see that most of those projects are completed, and shows the dates on that. And the chiller installed, startup was tested today, actually, at South Edward Middle School. And Tarboro High School is actually going to be installed in tomorrow. And we thought it was going to be realistic, but actually we did it up there. So we're very excited about that. A lot of information there, cost, dates, and projects that were taken out of ESR. I think a lot of things that were obviously much needed and support the infrastructure of our buildings. We certainly have more to do, but ESR funding obviously made a big difference for freshman county public schools. Before we move on, just want to see if you have any questions or thoughts. Carlton and Mike are here as well, if anybody has any questions on that.
I did. We've covered, and I was looking, all of the, they're the major or large projects that we're waiting on.
I think for the most part, we are close to the end.
Yes.
You're talking about the last one. Which is going live tomorrow.
At 8 o'clock. And so the underbelly of COVID is ESR. And we think.
Other questions or comment?
When you just say we could, I'll guess their funds just out.
Well.
Did you say September?
September of 2024, with some exceptions for some funding that is incumbent, which would last until the end of 2024. But what I will do, if the board is open to this, at the next meeting, I'll come back with where we are with the remaining funding for us.
Yes.
And I think our staff has done a really good job of spinning that money out, but leaving, leaving it up here at the end to still maneuver and take your.
Thank you so much. All right. Local budget increase, Dr. Brennan.
Thank you, ma'am chair. What you have in front of you is a little bit more information than what I presented at our last special board meeting. It's a one-page document that obviously is not completed yet, and I will come back to what we have left to do for that. Obviously, we're all moving toward a joint meeting with the commissioners on April 23rd. That's the annual meeting we have with them. And then we will come back in May to finalize this budget and have a vote on it. So just some, some information from you at the top of the draft document here. You have fiscal year '23, '24 county appropriation for local current expense. As most people know, the local funding is divided up into current expense and capital outlay. There you have over $8.5 million, which was, I'm certainly very grateful the county provided that to us last year, and $350,000 for capital outlay. Also, in that number, I've taken numbers that were in the plan of merger with Nash County Schools. Estimated county transfer of money coming back to local expense is potentially up to $1.6 million. And for anybody who doesn't know what that number is, it's the amount of money that's been sent previously from Encham County Public Schools to Nash County Public Schools for the East Rocky Mountain Schools. There's also additional $450,000, which has been, has been sent previously to Nash County Schools. Last year, that number was actually $53,000, but it's typically ranged in the neighborhood of $450,000, for a total of just over $2 million. In the local current expense, as I've documented at the bottom of the page, right now, in addition to those other funding sources, we, our draft copy has an increase of a little over a million dollars and for a total request of 11 to 44905. That is, of course, a draft. You ultimately make the final decision as Board of Education on this, and we'll be discussing options that you might want to either put in or take out that are part of that. You see some local current expense for people analysis for the numbers, and at this point, we're estimating using a number of 1,231 is the number of students potentially coming back to us from East Rocky Mountain. That number is fluid and probably will ebb and flow, we had those discussions. We will make sure that we stay on top of that. And of course, as everybody knows, one of the most fluid aspects of that number are the number of legacy students and potentially becoming back to Edco veterans that are rising 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. We've had some initial numbers on that from Nash County Schools. We're always looking to confirm that and make sure that we have as specific as we can get for planning purposes. And also think it's important for us to take note of that merger and eventually what we'll be looking at with what that will cost the district. List under this draft budget proposal is several different things. One, anticipated state raise certified instructional staff, that's taken into account the second year of biennial from the state level. Also anticipated 3% state raise for locally paid non-certified staff, including reserve for non, new state minimums, I think it's 7124. That's adjustment, some pay grades that we're looking at, human resources to be looking at that are mandated by the state, 7124. I covered those in our last special call meeting. Also looking, trying to account for a 3% state raise for any locally paid school and central office administrators. Those are things that just come along with the second year of the biennial budget at the state level that we're trying to take care of. Also in this, we're trying to remain competitive for our bus drivers, and across the board, we have looked to an increase, a minimum, a minimum of a dollar per step there, or range, a new range, it's an 8% average with a new range of $16.50 to $20 per hour, which accounts for $70,000. There are some additional costs in there for your consideration. Additional cost to create certified supplement from 10% to 11%. Additional cost increase certified supplement from 10% to 11%. As you know, I believe the Nash County local supplement is 11%. That would bring that up to a, to the same level with Nash and competition for, for some of those employees. Also looked at additional increase for, to raise all administrator supplements to 11%. That would impact a few principals, but also some assistant principals, some other administrative staff. And then, I think this is one of our highest priorities, additional cost increase classified supplement from, from $300 a year to $1,000 a year, which, which in our research of all this and, and looking to work, looking sort of historically at this is, is well, way overdue, way overdue. And finally, in this menu of items, a 10% rate increase for ad hoc supplements in the neighborhood of about $34,000. And I did not say this, that increase of classified supplement for $300 to $1,000 a year would be $239,000. That's an additional add. And that gets you to one point, a little over 1.1 million dollars. I will stop there for a moment and add some time since our last special call meeting to look over that. And just see if you have any questions about current expense, because then I'm gonna come back to capital outlay.
Dr. Brian, some of those, the, some of the requirements that the state put in place, mandates that the state put in place but did not fund. Of course, we're left holding the bag and having to fund them. Have you heard of any that the state might pitch into here?
I, I have not at this point, although it might be a little bit early to, I'll be getting a, an update on some sort of, an early look at the legislature. And, and we're, we're always, our, our administrative organizations throughout there are always trying to figure out. I have a webinar in about a week and a half that will talk about some of that as well. So, I'll report back to the board when I, when I hear some of that.
Anybody else have a question?
And once again?
I think it goes to the last.
Ma'am Chair.
Yeah.
I'm certainly open to your, your thoughts and suggestions, as we talked about at the last special call meeting. I will also say that we are working on the capital outlay request. I'm gonna ask for probably a meeting of the Facilities and Technology Board Committee to look at some of those priorities. We, we are making some decisions on what to put in that capital outlay request. Also, a discussion about how to use some of our last remaining Esser funding in that, in maintenance area, and, and also for lottery. So, I'm gonna need, I'm gonna need the board's guidance. Maintenance will be part of that discussion, and we will, we'll put some items on the table for you all to, to consider. That's why capital outlay is not here, but we, we have a, we have a running list as we speak for, for some things. And I want your guidance on that before we come back to the board.
Question about the lottery funding. Did we split out lottery funding on that side? Say one example. All the students, 1,700 students maybe was, was going up there. So, when the lottery funding came into Edco, did we have to give any of the lottery funding to, to that group of students?
I would like, like to check on that, ma'am Chair, but I believe that's stated in Edco County.
Okay.
Wait, that's stated in Edco County.
All right.
Oh, who, who, who?
I can change.
Yes, yes.
When the Facilities and Technology Committee needs, I'm a member of that, it would be nice if we could look at some of the issues in the buildings. I mean, I would like to, even if the group doesn't do it, but I don't know how busy everyone else is. Could we give us a better feel for the severity of some of the, I mean, I know that there are more issues than we have time to cover. I'm certainly aware of that. But you know, that would help us when we were having dinner with the county commissioners, that we could really chit chat about some of the things. And I've spoken to Mr. Perkins, he's, he is willing.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
I, I think, I think that's a great idea. And I think if you remember correctly, when we had some overheating issues at Southwest Edco High School, and our maintenance guys were, and folks were out there working on that, and we asked a couple more members to come out and visit, take a look, and rim and driven, and the sales were, were part of that group. And I think that's good, we all see that firsthand, it makes a difference.
And Ms. Kent, I'm sure, hours as well as the one east in Rocky Mountain.
I mean, I just, I just think the, when we sit down and talk with the county commissioners during supper, before we ask for money, it's so good if we can, instead of saying, well, the piece of paper says, that we can talk about, you know, some of the, and facilities is something I'm extremely interested in. So, the more, the more I know, you know, the better advocate I can be for the system.
It's a great idea.
Any other question?
So, ma'am Chair, just for everybody on the board, please, your thoughts, ideas, add-on, take-off, adjustments. I want to keep your feedback.
I just wanted to say it was good.
Keep working on it.
Did anyone else have any comments? So, you think so?
I think it's, I think it's real.
It's for real. I can tell you that. It's for real.
I think they should be fortunate that we're not asking for everything we need.
It's not done yet, Ms. Kent.
We're trying to be reasonable. We're trying to be reasonable.
I'm telling you.
The saving, or recouping. One more question, I'm sorry. Anything along, we, we talked, I think, in some of the meetings about buses, 72 passengers compared to what we have. Are we gonna need to do anything along those lines, or we're good?
Well, we're, we're in the process right now of working with our Transportation Department, Department of Public Instruction, and very soon again with Nash County Schools to talk about the transfer of those buses. And, and we're looking at that both from a traditional Yeldon School bus and also a activity bus as well. So, we, we're, we're in the process of trying to finish up that conversation and decide how we're gonna move on. I'm good, ma'am Chair, thank you.
6.6, oh, that's Dr. Perkins.
Ms. Perkins, you ready?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Board Chair, board members, this is Detective Dr. O'Brien. I'll be giving you all the maintenance updates. This is Bull, old chiller being moved out. This is the new chiller being brought in and placed. This is the final product, it's hooked up, it's going air.
May I ask a question, ma'am Chair? Just, just for everybody's information, the Bull chiller was originally not supposed to go into July.
July.
Nice surprise that we.
That's right.
That is impressive.
This is Bull roof repair. See the shingles and roof. This is the door bitch. This is the apron. With the shingles to the right. This is MMA old door, room 110. The door is splitting up the middle, so it's hard for the teacher there, locker door, closet, and all that. So, we ordered another door and had it turned up. This is MMA new door. This is North Edco visitor locker room, old door. We don't know what happened with this one. But we had to take it out, so we ordered another door, and this is what it looks like now. This is the Telo, old, a new pump for the boiler. The one, the old one burned up on the carpet fire. This is Southwest ball field. We have to change the faucet out there. Just kept breaking, so we just followed them and put it in. That's it.
Anyone have any questions from?
Mr. Perkins, I'm sorry. Mr. Perkins, one, that the night that all of this smoke and stuff over there and all of the rescue and ambulance, that, that's what happened to that?
Yes, sir. Telo?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Town was full. Lights, and flashing lights. I went over there.
I was supposed to stay my granddaddy's basketball game. That ended up out there, me and her.
She didn't get mad at you, did she?
She didn't understand.
You want to introduce your partner back there, Mike Harold?
Mike, this is Mike Harold. He's the major supervisor.
All right.
You're tall.
We spent many nights in Southwest when it was.
The whole.
Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Ma'am Chair, what you have in front of you, there's some extended day trips with the city, state, university for Southwest Edco, West Edco Middle School, NC State, and then G D, W Harbor Elementary School, U N College.
Are there any questions about any of the field trips, extended day field trips? Move on to fundraisers?
Fundraisers for Edco Middle College High School fundraiser with the Williams Plant Farm to sell geraniums, ferns, and roses, and daisies as well. I, I know, I know firsthand it was a, they did quite well.
And the plants were gorgeous. There no, there's no committee report this evening. We'll move on to the consent items, Dr. Brian.
Any questions about field trips or fundraisers? Also a proclamation there for a Week of the Young Child.
Hearing no questions, I'll ask for a motion for our consent items.
Ms. Kent, I move that we approve all of the consent items listed there.
Second. We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, the same sign? The motion carries, we'll move into items for action.
At this time, I'd like to turn over 8.1B. Matt Legg, who's here with us tonight, I appreciate him returning to Edco County Public Schools to take you through the first two items for action regarding social media, potential social media litigation.
And the two actions, the retainer and filing complaint. Yeah, so, thank you very much for having, can you hear me okay? Great, so, my name is Matt Legg, I'm an attorney from Baltimore, Maryland. I've partnered with, or my firms partnered with Janet Ward Black or Ward Black Law. They're based out of Greensboro, North Carolina, and together, we're representing school boards across the state in this litigation. So, what we're here to deal with today is the problem that we tied, the youth mental health crisis that we tied to social media addiction. This is a problem that's sort of taken hold over the last 10 to 12 years as the companies that hold out these platforms, deliberately design their products to get kids hooked on them, using them as long as possible, so that they're looking at their screens as long as possible and seeing as many advertisements as they could, so these companies could make a ton of money, which is exactly what's happened. The problem is that the science is increasingly showing a connection between extended use of these platforms and mental health problems among kids, whether it's depression, anxiety, eating disorders, all of which can lead to suicidal ideation, attempted suicides, and even completed suicides. We see school boards as being on the front lines of this problem, because the problems that, that these kids are dealing with, they manifest themselves in the classroom and on school grounds, and school boards are having to deal with the fallout. So, so why litigation? We think that, and we've found in the past in cases like these, that these companies, you've got companies that are making, and the defendants in this case, I should add, are Meta, who owns Facebook and Instagram, Fight Dance, who owns TikTok, Snap, who owns Snapchat, and Google, who owns YouTube. So, you've got these companies that are making enormous amounts of money on, you know, basically targeting children, and, and school boards are having to deal with the fallout of it. And so, this litigation is really aimed to get these companies to stop doing what they're doing. But it's also, the purpose here is to give you the resources that you need to deal with this problem, both what you've had to deal with in the past of earning resources where you would have put them elsewhere, but also to equip you with the funds needed to deal with this going forward. Sort of a quick point about, you know, what we do, in terms of any risk to the school board in joining this case there. From a financial standpoint, there is none. We work on a contingency fee basis, and we're only, we've received that via a successful recovery. We front the costs and are only reimbursed for those. Out of a successful recovery, then the cost would be minimal, it's filed, the complaint that's one of the action items here. So, I mean, I could go sort of on and on here about this, but I know you all have a lot to, on your attendance tonight, so I really appreciate your time and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does the board have any questions?
From, from the information presented, it looks like you're positive, that the firms are positive about this.
Yes, so there, there are hundreds of school boards that have joined this case over the last year. There are also 42 attorneys general, including your Attorney General, who have also, they believe strongly in this, and they've all banded together and filed lawsuits, all in the same case now. And there's also, you know, hundreds and hundreds of individual kids who also filed suit. So, yeah, we're strongly about it, and this case, we expect a lot more school boards to join over the next year plus. There are currently, I believe, 10 school boards in North Carolina who have filed suit, and another 10 who have, who have agreed to file suit and just haven't done it yet. We represent most of those, and yeah, we feel very strongly about it.
Does anyone have any questions about this, after him? If we file for a motion?
He answered mine, I was asking, I was gonna ask how many additional since the last time we talked. But you said 10 more have agreed to join, so that's probably.
Yeah, and I have a list, and I'd be happy to provide that to you. But yeah, there's, there's not a list of 20.
Can I get a motion for item 8.1.1B?
Can I get a motion for item 8.1. B?
I make a motion to approve the filed complaint in the United States District Court for the Western District of North Carolina against the social media companies seeking damages from youth mental health crisis created by social media.
That's second motion. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion carries.
Second part is just part B of all that.
So the second part would be whether the approval of the fees. Any discussion on that? If not, I'll ask, I'll call for a motion.
I move for the approval of the contention fee retainer agreement between Eskom County Board and Bad Madison and all their names there.
That's exactly what I would have said. May I have a second, please?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? The motion carries. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Ms. Ken.
You're welcome.
3B?
8.3B, approval of the Cooperative Innovative High School Renewal Agreement between Eskom Early College High School, that's also Eskom County Public Schools, partnership between Eskom Community Schools and Eskom Community College. Send that off to the state. It's obviously a great partnership, great school, and it's going to continue as is with that agreement.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we need to have a motion to approve 8.3B.
Chair, I move for the approval of the Cooperative Innovative High School Renewal Agreement between Eskom Early College High School and Eskom County Public Schools, Eskom Community College, effective March 15, 2024 through March 14, 2029.
Second. Has been moved and seconded that we will approve 8.3B. Any other discussion upon the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? The motion is carried. Thank you. 8.4B?
Let Dr. Bales go take that agenda item, of course.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Bryant, good to see y'all this evening. I am here, Ms. Sykes had a scheduling conflict, but I am here to ask for approval of a contract addendum between our Eskom County Board of Education and Kids Speak, Inc., to provide speech-language pathology services for fiscal year 2324. In speaking with Ms. Sykes, she said that this is to hire an additional speech pathologist to support the increase in students on our speech caseload. This would be moving from 80, excuse me, the original contract was for 102,000, and we're now adding 80,000 to add this extra position to help also support the merger work, excuse me, merger work for speech over the summer. According to Ms. Sykes, we currently are in need of five speech pathologists, two speech-language assistants to serve 300-plus students that are researching speech pathology services. At the time, I asked for approval of this contract addendum.
Dr. Bales, I just have one amendment. I did point this out to Ms. Sykes, but I think it got missed. I think there's a typo on the first page where it says Educating Eyes Provider. I think that should be Kids Speak.
What page is...
This is from...
Where are you reading?
This is from the addendum from the Contracting Year Board's book, the first page. I believe there's a typo where the provider is listed incorrectly. So my recommendation would be just that the board approve, add the, that's one small change to make that typo. The first sentence says Educating Eyes Provider. It should say Kids Speak.
Kids. Additional information, she's texting me as we go. Their caseloads are maxed out at 50 each, and there, she's currently down two therapists. So that's the need for the increase.
Certainly need for it. There's certainly a need for it. Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the contract addendum between Eskom County Board of Education and Kids Speak, Inc., to provide speech-language pathology services for fiscal year 202324 as amended. Second. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve 8.4B, contract addendum between Eskom County Public Schools, Kids Speak, Inc., to provide speech-language pathology services for 2324 as amended. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you all for introducing yourself.
8.5B?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Bryant, good evening. Tonight I'm requesting board approval, and this is contingent on the agreement approval by the board attorney, of the purchase of telehealth and distance learning equipment and services for middle schools and high schools, and to award the bid to N Care K-12 in the amount of $789,427.81. The funds were awarded through the Rural Utilities Service Grant, 85% of the cost in the amount of $671,013.64 will be used from the RUS grant funds. The remaining 15% of the cost, that will be $118,414.17, will be paid from the state technology funds per grant requirements. This was posted as a formal bid, and rubric was used to award. The winning bid met all bidding criteria, including being the only vendor that was able to provide all requested telehealth and telecommunications equipment and services. I listed the bids on the front of your board documentation here, and also provided you the matrix and evaluation of those bids. And as you see, we're requesting that the bid go to N Care K-12. So I'm recommending that the approval of the purchase of telehealth and distance learning equipment and services, again, contingent on the agreement approval by our board attorney, for middle schools and high schools, and to award the bid to N Care K-12 in the amount of $789,427.81. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Will this serve all middle schools or certain middle?
No, this is across the district for our current, yeah, for our current middle schools and high schools, and will also include the new merger school within this telehealth and telecommunications outreach.
Thank you.
Purchased out of the RUS grant thing.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a motion or any questions other than my...
Madam Chair, I'm waiting for approval of the purchase of telehealth and distance learning equipment and services for middle school and high school, and award the bid to N Care 12 in the amount of $789,427.81.
Contingent? Contingent on the approval of the attorney.
Yes.
Okay. It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve the purchase of telehealth and distance learning equipment and services for middle school and high school, and to award the bid to N Care K-12 in the amount of $789,427.81. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose the same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly.
Madam Chair, this is a request for waiving the community use of facilities application fee for Teresa Williams, Princeville, using Princeville Elementary Chapter for pastors' appreciation service, October 17, 2024, 4:00 a.m. For facilities, all contingent.
Any questions?
Yeah, one, Madam Chair. They're pre, are they charging to come to attend this appreciation?
I'm not sure. Is that application, this appreciation behind? Are you appreciating?
There are lots of people who do.
I don't believe, I do not believe, and I've said this numerous times, in people using our facility if they will be making a profit off of it, if they want to use it free. Now, if it's being catered and the cost is divided and they break even, I'm okay with it, but if someone's gonna make a profit off of using our facilities to waive the fee, I am not, I'm not in favor of that at all. Could we get more information? I know this is right down the road.
Uh, this is, what's it, 13?
We need to...
Patricia.
I'd say the board could approve contingent on, and then this one, another organization on this one's event not being used for a profit, but I'm saying that if it is for a profit, the board is not, like, the board's approval contingent on that fact that it's not for a profit.
I'm comfortable with that. Okay, I'll actually make the motion if you're ready. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we approve the wavering of the fee contingent on the fact that it's not a profit-making event. All right, and we'll follow ring policy number 5030 in reference to this recommendation. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Oppose the same sign? The motion is carried. Thank you for bringing that up. I would have thought if it's an appreciation, it would have been free. I wouldn't have even thought about that, so I'm glad you did.
Colonel Cole. Colonel Cole. Thank you, Charlie.
All right, 6.7. Is that Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Smith. Tonight I'd like to request approval of the school calendar for Eskom Early College High School and Educating Health Services. You know, you said this calendar is very much aligned with the calendar for traditional schools you approved last night. The teacher work days within the school calendar are exactly the same as well as the vacation, not the holidays. Going here, it says teacher work days beginning end of the year. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions to Ms. Hope in reference to the early college calendar for '24, '25? If not, I need your motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve of the 2024, 2025 calendar for early college, early Eskom Early College and Edge Academy of Health Services.
Has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve, approval for the '24 through '25 calendars for Eskom Early College High School and Edge Academy of Health Services. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion is carried. Thank you. Ms. Will, will you please take us into closed?
Yes. I make a motion under the North Carolina Open Meeting Law, Session 1, Section 143-318.11A, 1A3 and A6 to go into closed session to consider personnel matters, to consult with the attorney, to preserve attorney-client privilege information, and to prevent, prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232-G, and the disclosure of personnel records rendered confidential under GS 115C-319 through 321.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we will approve, any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Motion is carried. We'll take about a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back.
Are we clear on this?
Oh, we got it.
Okay. All right. The first, you all ready?
I'm just putting on the...
All right.
You can't change.
Approval of our personnel management?
I make a motion to approve our personnel management with the two amended exceptions.
We took care of that in closed session.
I make a motion to approve the personnel management.
Has been moved and properly seconded. Two people said it.
It doesn't matter.
Who was the person over here saying?
Evelyn Johnson.
All right, Johnson. It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our personnel management. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. For our extracurricular activities? You could go around.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, that we approve the extracurricular activities, Miss, as presented.
Johnson again. It has been moved and properly seconded that we will approve our extracurricular activities, spring sports. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day. Love, Dr. Evelyn Johnson. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right. Anybody else? I'm looking for somebody.
On behalf of my family, thank you all. And evidently, you haven't gotten my card yet. It was in the mail, should've been. But anyway, on behalf of my family, I want to thank you for the beautiful dish garden. And I see an envelope here, too. Thank you all. All that you've done. Thank you.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. And when the card come, we gonna read that one. Soon as we get it. Okay, if nothing else, I need to hear a motion to adjourn. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn this business meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Thank you very kindly. Okay, Board Correspondents? I have a correspondent. Thank you so much. Board members, your thoughtfulness is bright enough to light the world. Thank you. The beautiful floral gift will remind me of each of you each day.